Okay, we'll call the order, the eighth meeting, District 99 Board of Education. May I call the roll, please?
Bill White.
Here.
Julie Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Nancy Cupka here.
Terry Padasich.
Here.
Okay, let us stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is student perspectives. Looks like should be a very inspiring presentation. Dr. McDonald, do you want to hand it off?
Thank you, Mr. White. We are pleased this evening to have representatives of the state champion special Olympics basketball team representing Downers Grove South High School with us and their coaches and adult supervisors, and so we look forward to their presentation.
I'd like to introduce four members of the state championship special Olympics basketball team. We have Janine Draypek, Charles Huddleston, Anthony Murphy, and Jose Rosario here tonight. They're each going to give you just a little bit of insight into their experience playing basketball this season.
I'm going to say a word for you guys. We had great season, there was two wins and six loss. The crowd was very loud, so this fun. You said it.
Every year, I look forward to playing basketball more than anything else. It makes me proud to be on the team.
Excellent.
This year, I made new friends and I will also make students at DG support our basketball team.
I will never forget making the winning basket at Pack the Place. Stole the ball, dribbled in for a layup, hit the winning shot, and the place went crazy. The team ran on the court and everyone was hugging me.
One of my favorite memories was Pack the Place because Ms. Leahy and the cheerleaders cheered for us, even the Mustang mascot was there.
My kids going downstate and playing, watching my team. We had a pool and photo games at the hotel.
Excellent.
When we found out we were going to downstate, we decided to have a fundraiser in the CAF.
We set up a shooting contest in the cafeteria as a fundraiser and we made over $700,000. Students from my art class and the DG's basketball team all paid to support us and shoot.
Excellent.
The standoff for state was crazy. There was hundreds of students and teachers in the hallway cheering for us.
People made signs for us with their names on them and my whole class drove down to state to watch us play. They made me feel really special.
We took the money we raised at DG's and went out for pizza on Friday night.
I will never forget the award ceremony after school when I gave the trophy to Principal Bildt in front of all the teachers and students.
Well, in the first place, this trophy we get wait for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty fantastic. Anything else with this presentation?
No, I don't think we can top that, Mr. White.
Congratulations.
President White, if I could just add, I think Nancy and I were there for most of the presentation. We were lucky enough to be able to be there and the support from the school was incredible. There were hundreds of people there and it was just so cool to see them all really, really supporting this team and they were all so happy. It was just a wonderful occasion.
Okay, wonderful. That's excellent. Before we move into the far less exciting topic of health, is there anybody in the audience wishes to address the board for reception of visitors? Any questions?
I think most of our visitors left.
Okay, okay, so then the third item on the agenda is a board workshop on health and dental insurance. Dr. McDonald?
Mr. White, every year, in the late spring of the year, we make recommendations to the board about healthcare, dental premiums and benefits. And previous years, the board has asked us to review these in advance of the vote and that's what our plan is to do tonight. In addition, tonight, I think we intend to discuss a little bit about the changes that are due based on the federal healthcare legislation. And we are fortunate to have Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Kennedy, who are our insurance consultants from HUD. I'm not sure that acronym stands for, but I know it's HUD. And they would certainly, I'm not sure to the extent that they will be making a presentation, but they will certainly be participating and answering questions. So, Mr. Stalyn will do his presentation for us and he's got his AV all set up.
Well said. If you recall, there was a presentation a couple of years ago, and I think everybody here had seen that. It was to cover the benefits and answer a few questions and here's, we'll just start out pretty much the same way with this workshop. What health benefit plans do we offer? What are we doing to manage and reduce costs? How are the plans performing? And then what are the recommended 2013, 14 premiums? That's a little bit different and it's the focus of this. If you recall, this beautiful donut, I don't know if you recall that from a couple of years ago, that it was, I got, I think applause at that time when I put this together with, no, 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 no. But it really tried to show how everything's interrelated and our health plan benefits with the cost, the making them attractive to existing external candidates as well as the benefit design and how they all work together. Tonight, we're, I'm not going to cover all of those topics. In fact, you're going to see a few drop here real quickly and really just going to look at total compensation, that approach, the self-funded versus conventional, just overview that again, because from time to time, you may get questions from individuals, why are we self-funded? Why don't we just buy a plan or vice versa? Why don't we stay all self-funded? And then talk a little bit about the insurance committee and their recommendation. And towards the end of the presentation, we'll also be covering some of the new healthcare reform act provisions. And for the most part, we've already enacted plan changes, but this is now just some fees that are going to be coming into play and that's why I have two gentlemen from Hub to bail me out, because they know it inside and out and we're still learning it, because some of the legislation is still being formed. But we'll just go right along here. We have basically two PPO medical plan options. We have two HMO medical plan options for employees. We have one PPO dental plan option and one HMO dental plan option. And the key question, how do we control costs? There's really two ways. One at the plan claim level, and these are some of the lower-priced doctors that we use in our plan.
Wow, that's really young.
And then also at the operating budget level. So, we also, there's a lot that we can do in the plan and that's, as you'll find out through here, is really the work of the insurance committee in terms of analysis and then the operating budget is really more of a strategic operating level that we work within the district. At the plan level, we do maximize the network claim experience. That's really our goal. The more that you can get employees to go to a contracted provider, the more you can control those costs and that's the number one key in our plan. The plan structure, self-insured if possible, helps us eliminate some of the extra costs. I'll talk about that in a minute. Making timely benefit plan changes helps us control costs, helps us steer to some extent, but also helps us to, historically has helped us to reduce or eliminate premium increases. And then wellness screenings is something that we've started the last few years to just encourage proactive care. So, that's things we can do at that level and I'll start to open those up a little bit. The self-insured plan that we use is for our medical and dental PPOs. It eliminates additional premium component insurance companies tack on to cover risks. So, if Blue Cross ensures our plan, they're not sure how well we're going to do in any one particular year, they'll tack on a risk premium and our costs go up. They may win some years, some lose some years. They don't know that they're going to have us next year, so they have to have that built into the plan every year. When we're self-funded, we don't have to have that. We can have a reserve that can absorb some of the shock of the plans from year to year and so we actually believe we have a leaner and more effective plan in a self-insured mode. And District 99 is large enough to absorb those risks. Conventional coverage is also offered for HMO networks, which is more highly prescribed, I think the term I'm looking for is contracted set of providers and so the contracts are going to be with better discounts, but then it starts to limit choice of doctors and in some cases, the way you go about getting healthcare. So, you'll see in a few minutes, the HMOs are gaining some ground, but they're still not the most popular in schools yet. It is the only way to access those deeper discount networks and it's a good option for a lot of employees that really don't think they're going to need much coverage or they have a doctor that's in the plan and it just is a perfect fit for some employees. So, we still want to keep that option even though we're paying Blue Cross some risk premium with those HMOs. And enrollment in the health plans, tall blue bar are the PPOA, and you can see it's declined a little bit. It's been about 245, it's down to about 225 now. This is from left to right, 2009, 10, 11, 10, 11, 11, 12, and then the current enrollment for 12, 13 plan year. And the PPOB is in red and that's been pretty stable. It dropped a little in 10, 11, but it's been fairly stable. And those two plans are certainly our most popular plans and I think if you go to any school, you'll find that PPOs are the convention basically in the school benefits. The green bar is the HMOC, which is a Blue Cross of Illinois, HMO Illinois plan, and has a pretty good network. But we're finding that as new employees come on, we're able to steer them into the HMOD, which is a smaller network, but if many employees come into us, young students, not students, but kids out of college so to speak, or younger employees, they don't have a doctor yet. They're more willing to look at the HMOD plan. And in some of the groups, we've done some very active moving of premium cost back and forth so that we can actually attract them into the D. And in some ways, it is a low-cost plan. It also has some benefits, the employees and the HMOs where their out-of-pocket may be very low, as long as they don't have many claims. So, how do our plans compare to trend? Well, let's first decide what is trend. Trend is, starts with the medical CPI. Everybody's, I think, pretty familiar with CPI. That's an inflation factor. Currently, it's been at 3.3 percent. That was educated guess from our Hub International. And other things affect what we call trend over the overall cost of inflation. So, if it was only medical CPI, we would all have to worry about 3 percent or so increases in costs, just like we do all of our other inflationary costs. But new technology, specialty drugs coming to market is a big thing. Those commercials for pharmacies you see on TV, that's, they work and people are using them and using them so that you know that there's some cost in our plans driven by those new prescription drugs. The fact that we're up in Chicago in the metro area is a factor in our trend. We have higher inflation for services up here. Cost shifting from Medicare and Medicaid to private sector plans is another factor. And then practice of defensive medicine by doctors, being very careful to avoid, I guess, the malpractice insurance is another way to say it. So, really, when you put all those factors together, what we're seeing in other plans and from, actually from Blue Cross, their trend factor is 7 percent across their book of business, so to speak. So, that's what we would compare our plan to if we were not to change any benefits or not do anything, is 7 percent factor. The average over the last five years for that trend factor is actually 8.9 percent. And if you look at it on a graph, the dark, like the purplish line there is the Blue Cross PPO trend factor since 2004 or '05 through what is expected to be the trend for 13, 14. The black line is the actual PPOA plan in terms of the annual increases for our benefits, for that package, the PPOA. And the yellow line is for the PPOB. And you can see for the most part, we've been able to stay below that trend factor. And you can see, it does follow it. You know, we've had spike years when that trend spikes, but we've also, if you look at the far right end of the yellow and black lines, we've not had to increase our premiums for, well, this year, 2012, 13, and we are not expecting or not going to recommend that we increase it again for next year. And there's a couple of factors that weigh into that, but I'll get to that in a minute. If you look at the PPOB, I'm sorry, these are the HMOs, apologize. This is the HMOs. The trend factor is a little different for those, but we've been able, again, to stay well below the HMO trend factor. Dental plan, which is a really small part of our overall cost, you can see the PPO line on top, the dental, which is equivalent to an HMO, the DMO plan, is the red line going across the top. And really, once we converted over and changed over to Delta Dental, we had one year of increase, 5 percent the first year, and then really had kept those plans flat. And until we went to 2010, 11, and we decided, as part of the concern that our reserves were getting too big, we said, well, let's reduce the premium actually for the PPO dental plan. And we reduced it by 5 percent. And we also made an adjustment to the benefits to kind of modernize the plan. We hadn't done anything with it since we had it and we raised the total benefit ability up to $2,500 and now we're seeing it start to track again like where it would be. So, this year, we're actually recommending a 5 percent rise in the dental PPO plan, just so we keep it in line with its costs. Health plan reserves have been growing and we, in spite of not making any premium increases, we expected the reserves to drop, but we have had very good claim history. Now, historically, you can go for five or six years, have great history, and then have a 20 percent year. It catches up with you. And so, we do suggest keeping a reserve no less than 20 percent, but we also think a cap on the reserve of 50 percent is reasonable. So, we do think we have more reserve than we need right now and so that weighs into the decision to not increase our premiums for next year. We want to eat down some of this reserves. The reserves is a combined wealth. Technically, when we come to our annual financial reports at the end of the year, it's added to our educational fund. So, it's technically that $2.6 million when we show it in our financial statements for our cap on the modified accrual basis, it's added to our fund balance. But technically, it's really comprised of 75 percent board contributions and 25 percent, roughly, employee contributions. And so, it is kept in a separate account, separate checking account, and we do account for the transactions individually for investments and everything else. Really, in my opinion, the only right way to let that reserve drop is to, is slow down the growth of premiums and let the claims eat it up, because it's not all District 99 dollars and I would say more in a moral sense. In a legal sense, yes, we could knock it down, but I think the right way for us to manage that is to just let it road itself down on its own. So, the plans look like they're doing great, but what are we doing at the district level to control this with operations? What are we doing that the insurance committee doesn't really have impact on, but what are we doing as an administration? And I think you've heard this in the past, the total compensation approach, it's how we have, and whenever we get into negotiation situations within any of our groups, it's been to consider salary and benefits tied together, that they are really all part of total compensation. It's very difficult to look at one half without considering the other. And then we also have that tied to the revenue stream or the annual resources that we determine is appropriate for all the groups in one year. Defined contribution is, I guess, a mindset that we use here. We're going to fix the amount that we're willing to pit forward in resources as opposed to guaranteeing a defined benefit. We're not saying that whatever each employee group got last year is 100 percent going to stay the same and just lock that into our budget and assume that. We're going to assume that whatever our revenue resources are, we're going to make a connection to those employee groups that we don't surpass that revenue stream. So, employees are required in many cases to give up salary in order to allocate more of the available resources to the benefits. So, if you're, and I have a kind of a little chart here and then I have a graphic way to show that as well. So, historically, if you look at this, it's kind of a blurry picture, apologize, but that, the green, okay, man, the green line on top is really the track of our revenue stream. It's our CPIU plus new construction growth for our taxes. There are sometimes that level is higher or lower, but it's generally because of federal dollars that are tied to programs. And you can see that for the most part, we're able to keep all of our annual settlements below that revenue stream. And if you see one popping up there, I think the purple, which is CMG, we might have one year where we made an increase, a conscious increase, or you might have a couple that go above it for a year. But you also see some there, and I'll try and use my arrow here, where we're below. It's because the, this is the support staff, the yellow is, oops, I just changed gears on you. The yellow is the certified staff, the teachers. They have multi-year contracts and so we will, over a three or five-year period, average that out, because a lot of times, we're guessing into the future what an average CPI will be. And so, we make sure that we agree with that estimate going forward. And then we might have a year where CPI, like if you look at 2009, 10, our total revenue stream was actually up at 5 percent, but we didn't assume it was going to go that high. And then in 2010, 11, it was much lower, you know? So, the CPI does fluctuate, but over time, we are able to keep all of our costs this way in line with our revenue stream. In fact, we've been able to keep it over time below our revenue stream. Benefits of the total compensation approach, it's predictable. In a large way, it provides for a level of stability for both the district and for our employees. It's the same concept, historically, we had been doing this, the same concept used for all employee groups. It's equated to and seen by the employees as being fair. They don't like to hear at negotiating tables and in negotiating that this is the amount of pot to work with, but if they know that every employee group's getting the same percentage, it somehow is more palatable. It's been used for the last 18 years and it's, in my opinion, it's key to us maintaining the stable, balanced budget over the long haul. And this is a little, you know, graphic I was telling you, is if we were just to assume for a particular year, district-wide, we were going to say 2.3 percent is the number this year. This is what CPI is, or this is what our revenue stream is, or this is just the revenue allocation that we're willing to make to our employee groups. Let's assume it's 2.3 and it could be split any way. We could say you can use half of it for benefits, half of it for salary. That's kind of the concept. Each of the groups then will take that 2.3 percent and will allocate it a different way. CMG, well, this is certified staff. Certified staff do like to try and keep a constant board-paid amount, but they're willing to give up perhaps salary increases for that. So, they want to maintain benefits at a certain particular level. Support staff will do the same thing. They may want to put a little bit more on benefits and a little bit less on salary. CMG, historically, has always wanted to make sure that the benefits are kept level from across, but they're willing to give up more salary to do that. So, it's the same pot, just split different ways. And historically, that's what we've done on the admin as well. We've used the same methodology. So, that's just something that we've used historically and as part of the benefits when we talk about them. Rural Insurance Committee, all employee groups are represented. It evaluates plan activity and makes recommendations for premium increases, plan design changes, and benefit reductions as needed. It is advisory capacity only and right now, and I think it's still, it's been the case for quite a while now, that the all-employee groups have a very high trust level in the insurance committee and their recommendations. When they tell individuals to think about getting a 90-day mail order, we ask the staff to do that. We ask them to be the messengers of that and employees do that. And so, and when somebody goes to somebody in insurance committee and says, is the HMOD, is that a good plan? Is that a safe plan? They will trust their opinion of that. So, there's a high trust level in the work of that committee. The work this year, October, December, we had met a couple of times, reviewed the plan, prior year's results of operations. We reviewed the first three months of the 12, 13 plan year. There were no concerns noted. In fact, at that time, we noticed that we were running better than expected again. In March, we reconvened, we looked at the activity through February, and we reviewed the reserve activity and status. And then we also had an update from Kennedy, from Chris and Jim from Hub on the healthcare reform measures that we would have to consider for next year's plan. And here, actually, I'm going to breeze through it, but if you have questions, this is where Jim and Chris can help bail me out. There's new requirements and really, we've already implemented plan design changes over the last couple of years. So, we've implemented all the mandated, for the most part, all the material mandated plan changes. They're really, and if you look at our reserves, we're still running very well. So, it hasn't had a big financial impact on us. The Affordable Care Act does have some new fees that will become effective January 1st of 2014 and our plan year runs through August, so it will have eight months of impact to our plan. There's three fee areas. One is, and this is where I'm just reading your words right now, I couldn't tell you what this really means, but it's transitional reinsurance fee. I'll give the next opportunity to these two gentlemen to explain that. Patient-centered outcomes research institute fee and the health insurance industry fee and that only affects the HMO. And so, if you, I'll put this up and maybe give either Jim or Chris, I guess Chris, the opportunity to talk about these. The fee amounts themselves are fixed, five and a quarter for the covered life for that, the first one. Well, you want to just pick it up and?
Yeah, I'll put it up there.
You can, yeah, right here is good or?
Okay, sure. Okay, so we have, there's three fees. The first one is the transitional reinsurance fee. That applies to self-funded plans and so we've got our self-funded PPO plans that will sort of absorb some of those fees. Now, the reason for this fee, according to the law, is to help fund the adverse selection or the risk that the insurance industry is going to absorb by bringing in those uninsured folks, people who haven't had insurance, that are going to come out of the plan and get guaranteed coverage. So, they're anticipating costs to go up and they're passing that on in the form of this transitional reinsurance fee. So, it's a, this is one of the larger fees that's associated with the act and $5.25 per covered life, that includes dependents. So, if we have 400 and So if we have four hundred employees on the plan, let's say there's, you know, there's spouses, feedback, spouses and children are included in that count. Okay? So when we did the math, we came up with about fifty-five thousand dollars for eight months. So that'll get us through the plan year through August.
Could you hold on to the mic?
Did you hold the mic?
Oh, is that?
Being asked to hold on to the mic.
I've got to turn it up all the way, so it works best an inch or two from you.
Oh, is that right? Okay, all right, okay. Getting a little feedback here, but. So, yeah, we're looking at about fifty-five thousand for the balance of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen plan year, and then, of course, we'll have a full twelve months when we put the fourteen, fifteen plan year projections together. So not an insignificant fee, relatively speaking. The patient-centered outcomes research institute fee is an interesting one.
Yeah.
Very small fee. It's one dollar per covered life for the year, so nominal, but that is a small fee that is going to be assigned to scientists researching various forms of treatment and determining, if they look at two or three different possible outcomes, they're going to try to find out, you know, which approach works best. That's an interesting one. I'm not sure how we're going to be able to determine if that really works or not, but the health insurance industry fee, that applies only to insured programs. So it's not applicable to the self-funded PPO plans. It's equal to about two percent of our HMO premiums. So we just, again, do the math, twenty-eight thousand for the first eight months, and then add a third on for that if you want to just kind of get a twelve-month snapshot. All told, I think we're looking at about, you know, a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a twelve-month basis when we pull out, you know, divide by eight and multiply by twelve. So it'll give you an idea of an annual cost to the plan.
Every insurance, every employer group in the entire United States is getting hit with these fees by January one.
Well said, well said, well said. So the health, that's right.
Yeah.
The health insurance industry fee is, make no mistake about it, it's a premium tax to help fund for the cost-generating provisions of the Affordable Care Act, i.e. tax subsidies, tax credits.
Oh.
So when those employee, or those folks go out on the exchange
Yeah.
and get a subsidy from the government to pay those premiums, that's it.
It's really from us.
Exactly, exactly. It's coming from everybody who runs a plan. So you've got the tax subsidies, but you also have the tax credits for small plans with employers that have less than twenty-five employees. There's also tax credits they get for offering insurance coverage. So that's part B, I guess, of that fee.
And Chris, which one of these is scheduled to phase out over three years? Isn't there one that's a three-year?
Yeah, the, I want to, do we got that?
It's the transitional reinsurance fee.
Transitional reinsurance fee, so yeah.
It's transitional.
It's actually scheduled to go down, will bid each of the next three years from the five and a quarter, which really is sixty-three dollars per life per year divided by twelve months. It's scheduled to go down and go away after three years. On the other hand, the industry fee is scheduled to go up.
Oh.
Don't think it's going to go away totally.
The logic of the reinsurance fee going away, though, is that once that uninsured risk comes on and you've got coverage over a multiple-year period, it's, I mean, everybody's in the fund, so to speak.
Right.
So they've recouped it, and now they can price everything accordingly, so.
Instead of what, the number of covered individuals, spouses, children, that those first two fees apply to?
For your group is about thirteen hundred, just to let you know. So you might have five hundred-plus employees covered, but thirteen hundred individuals counting dependents.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at all, or?
You're talking about, we have two PPO plans, right?
Correct.
So, but that five twenty-five is per covered life, that's like thirteen hundred, we don't have to double that twice.
Each one independently.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So that fifty-five thousand is really the total for the eight months for both of them?
For the two PPO plans combined.
Combined, right.
Yes.
That's the key word.
Yes. And same with the HMO, too, because we've got two HMO plans.
Right, so that's the same thing.
Right, we combine the premiums on the industry fee and take the percentage off of that.
If we were, we have, one of our PPO plans, self-insured, so if we weren't self-insured, how would the fees be any different, or would they?
Well, yeah, the industry fee, if you were insured on your PPO, you'd be paying two to two and a half percent on your PPO premiums.
So even more.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, it's definitely a premium tax, so, and I say that in that when you self-fund a plan, you avoid premium taxes and other forms of retention.
Go away.
I think as Mark said earlier, that self-fund when possible, self-fund when possible because in general, your, the margin, the retention that an insurance carrier is going to charge or pass on is minimized. And so this is a perfect example of that.
Well, it's, you know, it's another example of why we want to self-fund. It's additional, there's additional savings beyond what we're even showing, so.
It's actually, without the microphone, it's actually about five million.
If your PPO plans were insured, you'd be paying about five million dollars annually that that tax would apply to that it won't now, so.
There you go.
And that two and a half percent of five million. Actually, and there's an existing one to two percent premium tax that already exists, so it'd be on top of that. So you're technically saving that plus whatever premium tax you would have paid otherwise. It's the right way to go. I mean, you guys have won out consistently over the last several years.
Right, and as we look at the, as we look at the trends, the graphs we had up there for the trends, and we look at the climbing reserve, I think that that's a further example of how, why we're self-funding. Fair statement? I mean, it demonstrates why we're able to do it and do it effectively, and why we can afford to take on that risk. I don't know if we've ever, have we ever really looked at what that risk is? Because you, in the opening, you stated that, you know, if we weren't self-insured, there'd be some sort of padding in there for Blue Cross Blue Shield in order to?
Two to three percent.
Okay.
That'll build in a margin factor. Now, that usually we can, you know, kind of squeeze a little bit, but, you know, just avoiding those premium taxes, holding the reserves. The insurance carrier, whether it be Blue Cross or United Healthcare, on an insured basis, they hold the reserves. They throw them in the bank, they make money on it.
Nice.
So, right, so that's a lost expense or revenue stream there. So by holding those reserves, you're earning interest on it and
Sure.
keeping that money.
Another example of why this is the right thing to do, so.
So, this silly question, but because of all of, you know, fifty-five thousand is not chump change, do we split that with our people, or do we absorb that all?
I'm sorry, what, I missed the question.
That?
We're going to absorb, we're going to absorb it.
We absorb it, we don't pass it on?
In the PPO plans, we're going to absorb that because the reserve is so high right now.
Okay.
We want the reserve to drop, and that's less than one percent of the plan, you know, so.
But previously have, because you said that we already pay a fee
I think on the HMO.
On the, on the HMOs, right?
The HMO prices, and actually, I did cut out a lot of slides, so I apologize for giving you the short version. The HMO prices are largely dictated to us, you know, so we, they will build some increases into the plan. And so you'll see a recommendation that we are seeing a five percent increase that we're expecting to recommend next week to the board for the HMO because that's what Blue Cross is, how they're pricing the plan. And those fees are built into that
That increase.
Recommendation, right.
And the fact that we're dropping the reserves to help cover some of that, and as you stated earlier, basically a quarter of that money is really their money.
Yeah, right, that's where it's been derived.
Right, so in essence, they are, they are sharing in the cost.
Right, okay, all right. I was just curious because I think it's a lot for us to absorb, you know, I mean.
It is, but we keep thinking each year that we'll absorb some more, and our plan actually keeps running better.
Well.
And so we've been adding to that reserve to where we're really at a high level, beyond what we need to have.
Don't you think part of it is because we have a very young workforce?
That helps, that helps. And the HMO itself has no impact on the reserve because we just, whatever the premiums are, that doesn't stay in the reserve, it goes right out to, so the reserve really is the PPO portion of that. I think a lot of the younger staff are going into the HMOs.
HMOs.
But a good number are taking the PPO because it's still the preferred plan. If your doctor's not in the HMO, you don't necessarily want to make that change. So it's a mix, it's never too easy.
I know.
Yeah.
On that point, though, if we go back to the beginning, the total compensation approach, all of these fees eventually get rolled into the total compensation package, isn't that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so, so it's all going to roll into the total compensation one way or the other.
Right, it's all handled in one pot, so to speak, in terms of the approach that we use.
And the all-up number is the total compensation number is the one number that we navigate by.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
I just have a curiosity question. I understand that we're self-insured, and there's a term for it, and I can't think of what the term is, but do we carry any?
Reinsurance.
Reinsurance.
Yes, we do, we have, we don't carry aggregate insurance anymore, which is if the total plan has X an experience over a certain dollar amount, then a separate policy would kick in. We've never come close to that happening, and so we've dropped that, but we do carry specific. And actually, this year is an unusual year. So far this year, we've not had any claims. I don't think, did we have ones? Either one or no claims that have hit the hundred and fifteen thousand, so we've had a really good claim that year. Last year, we had recovered under that reinsurance plan four percent of our total expenses. I mean, it was really, it more than paid for itself. So, yes, so if any individual claims are over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we have an insurance policy which does kick in for that. And it pays for itself, it's a good, it's been working out well for us.
The year before last, you had two very large claims that totaled
About a million dollars.
So I don't know what the
So that's when you need it, you need it for those huge claims.
Oh, yeah, and it smooths out the month-to-month funding of claims. So, I mean, imagine if you had to pay that million in two or three months versus just a hundred and fifteen, hundred and fifteen. So, I mean, the plan's put together perfectly from a risk management perspective, and you've had good, just generally speaking, large claims will usually dictate the overall performance of the plan. So we've been fortunate over the last two or three or four years not to have the ten or eleven pulled claims.
Now, one other question, back to the total compensation approach. Would it be fair to say that since the employees are essentially paying their own insurance and claims from the total package, that they understand that they have considerable incentive to use their healthcare wisely?
It's a huge part of it. That is a big part of it, knowing that there's, you look at any group and they know that if we were to go to a different way of the defined benefit, you know, then they wouldn't be vested in the plan. So it's a huge part to keep everybody vested in the plan, all groups vested in the plan that way.
Right.
And knowing that if they do do well, and their plan does do well, that there's a reward back to them, that's a big incentive.
Yeah. Question, just a detailed question. This is, the ACA covers medical insurance, does it also cover dental?
Well, there is a provision in the Act that requires you to provide pediatric oral care
Okay.
on a dental, so dental care for kids.
Mm-hmm.
Our plan right now, the dental plan, is a carved-out dental plan.
Right.
And it covers, it's in compliance, yeah, so we're complying with that requirement right now.
So there won't be any transactional or transitional fee or whatever on the dental plan, right?
The dental HMO is considered an insured plan.
Oh, got it, that's right, you call it HMO.
Yeah, the reinsurance, and the first two don't, but that industry fee will come in.
That will hit your
There's not a lot of folks on that plan, it's relatively insignificant, but that is lumped into.
So, and it will be the same, the two percent?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. I'm sorry, I had a question. We do have a third-party administrator, right, for the self, and then, I know there's a fee there.
Blue Cross.
It's well worth it, I'm sure, but there is a fee, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's all also lumped in.
They do have a very, I would say relatively high access fee, but they also have the broadest network and they have the deepest discounts. And so we know that, I don't know if I showed it to you yet, but we have, our performance, I haven't showed it yet because there's, but we've had great participation. In fact, it might be, no, it's not coming up yet, so I'll have to wait. I'll get to it in a minute, but the participation in the plan, it pays for that excess fee. It's somewhere in the area of six or seven percent when you take our total self-funded cost as a separate piece. So it is, it is, but
Substantial.
Yeah, it is higher. And at a point in time, I think we also buy the reinsurance, I've had, bought that through Blue Cross, which was a little more expensive, but it's still, in all, we've been analyzing it and feel that it's still the best way to keep everybody in the network.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead, I was hoping I had this great graphic. Twenty thirteen, the committee results, we don't recommend any plan changes other than the fee implementations for the Healthcare Reform Act, healthcare reform. We set a target for open enrollment to start three to four weeks before the last day of class, and so you notice we're up about a month here because end of school year is at the end of May. So we are looking for action in April this year as opposed to any later than that, because we'd like to open enrollment early in May. We recommend a five percent premium increase, but only in the medical HMO because Blue Cross is telling us that's what we need to do to stay in their plan. And also, in the dental PPO only because we did increase the benefits last year, and we're starting to track now closer to trend, and so we don't want that one plan to get out of whack. And it's a relatively small increase, it's a few dollars a month per premium. So we're going to increase, and you'll see, actually, in a more detailed memo that you'll get with the board packet for next week, the justification of these increases, but this is just giving you like a little preview of that. And April fifteenth, we'll have that board meeting, or you'll have that next Monday, and we'll be looking for action on the actual premiums themselves. So I'm going to try and wrap this up. We currently offer plans that give our employees options and allow us to manage our costs effectively. That is a penny, rolling on a graph, just so you can see.
Huge.
Yeah, we're watching it. Plans are performing well, they're running at a below trend, we are very high in-network use, the reserves are strong, and they can absorb any of the twelve, twenty, thirteen to fourteen increases that we've brought to you, or that we think that we will have with the plans. Benefits are directly linked to salaries and total compensation, it's a key component that enables us to stay within our revenue stream. And then the insurance committee, again, retains high trust with the employee groups, and they recommend an increase of five point one in the medical HMO, five percent in the dental PPO specifically. And that's it for my slides, sorry. I don't know if there's any other questions for either the gentleman from Hub International or me.
Bill, one other, sorry. You've given us a really nice summary of what the Affordable Care Act will meet, will mean for us. Do you anticipate any surprises that we don't know about yet? Because I understand a lot of regulations are still being made. Am I right about?
Sure, there will be surprises. There already are. One of the, just a week ago
Microphone?
I'm not right.
I promise, Chris, I wouldn't do much talking, but there I go. Around the clock.
Just pull it forward.
Just pull it up.
Yeah, straightforward, yeah.
All right. Just last week, The New York Times had an article, has not yet been confirmed by Washington, but it has already announced that the exchanges that were to be offered January one fourteen across the country, as you might know from reading things, the federal exchanges are mandatory, states, some are going to do it, some aren't. Illinois announced just a few months ago they were going to partner with the federal side and have a partnership exchange. But again, last week, in The New York Times, it announced that that will be delayed one year.
Oh.
Now, that's a surprise, because Obama himself has been saying he will not budge on that. These exchanges will be out operational for small groups and individuals on January one. And it sounds like, I haven't seen it in writing, Chris, have you seen it in writing from any reliable Washington source? I have not.
I have no feeling so.
We have our attorneys in New York that keep us updated, and they say it's coming, so that, again, will be a surprise. Now, that's not going to affect you at all.
Right.
But you can bet that they're not going to waive these fees a year.
I was just going to say, yeah, would they delay the fees? I was just going to say, yeah, would they delay the fees?
The fees will start, I'm sure, on January 1, regardless. So other surprises, I'm sure there will be, and at this point, we can only guess. Thanks.
Thank you. That was really encouraging.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, thanks very much.
Yeah, you can put it on.
Next item on the agenda is another reception of visitors case. I don't see anybody here wasn't here before, so I don't think there'll be anything, so.
Thank you so much.
We'll open and close the second reception of visitors. The fifth item on our agenda is closed session. For purposes of the video recording, we can say that when the board returns from closed session, there will be no action taken other than adjournment. So I don't think, the plan is to allow our individual people to leave, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, so we'll be signing off the tape once we go in closed session, but no action will be taken other than a motion to adjourn. So no one will miss anything. With that, we have two topics, or two areas for closed session purposes. Employment-related issues, 5 ILCS 120C, 120/2C1, and the involvement of purchase or lease of real property, which is 5 ILCS 120/2C5. Any member of the board wish to make a motion to go into closed session?
No move.
A member of Pabst's moves, do you have a second?
Second.
Member Beckman's seconds, call that vote, please.
Chair, Pabst.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Peter Cupcup.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye, the motion carries, we will be in closed session, but we really can't...